As opposed to Iowa Sneed.
The Muscatine City Council in-depth session will come to order. We'll begin this evening with a roll call, Greg.
Certainly, Councilmember Spread.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Shawadick.
Present.
Natfig.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Lorette.
Present.
All present, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you Greg. We'll begin this evening with item number two on the agenda, a review of the 2013 core values, vision and mission, and the 2013 City Council goals and management agenda. Greg, I believe you are the presenter.
Thank you. I really believe there's only two discussion items, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but really we need to pick between the vision statements. We have two samples. And then there was a discussion at the last meeting determining whether or not we wanted to include the word blight in the goals themselves, or as originally stated, just include the two tools that we've listed out in the goals, tax abatement specifically, to deal with historical and new construction. From a staff perspective, we originally did not include the blight language in the goals themselves. We've only included the word blight where we've been legally required to do so, and that was in the urban renewal plan. And by doing so, that opens up tools that the city has or can adopt to utilize to address blight or other issues that we have in the community. So we've only included where we're legally required to do it, and that was in the urban renewal plan. It's been there, in the last update, it's been there for 20 years. I mean, it got some notice last time, it's a word that obviously people pick up on, and we had some discussion about it. But the reason it's there is because it's legally required to be there so that we can have or adopt additional tools. Our thought was not to include it in the goals themselves, but to include the tools that we'd like to bring forward for council adoption in 2013. Steve at previous in-depth did an update on those tools, and we'll be bringing back a review of those in an ordinance at a later date for council review and hopefully adoption to address new construction, historical tax abatement, and some additional abatement in surrounding the historical area, or blighted areas, as you might want to call it. So I guess really tonight, we're looking for council to pick between the two vision statements, if there's a preference, and let us know if you'd like to include that word in the stated goals or not, and we'll bring back those for adoption next week.
I think both of the vision statements sound okay to me. I guess if I was asked to prefer one or the other, I'd say the second one, and I'm okay with your recommendations to leave the word out, just to start the discussion.
And I'll agree with Scott. I like number two, and I adamantly do not want the word blight in our goals or anywhere else other than where legally mandated.
I'm going to give a little background on this, because I actually requested that we have a specific goal of dealing with the issue since we gave an entire swath that designation last year. You know, there's a lot of people that have to live under that designation, and there should be something in here that they can clearly see, not that we've got tax abatement, but somewhere where they can clearly see that we've made a commitment to address that. And I'm not really sure why there's a fear of the word blight in our goals. I can go to any number of cities' websites, I did so today, Iowa City, Clinton, Dubuque, they all mention prominently on their website that they have urban renewal plans, they have programs to address blight. They don't try to hide it on some drill-down page, 10 levels below the main page, it's very prominent out there. This is something good. This is something we have done to give us more tools so that we can address the issue, and we should promote that. I did print out an example of, and I'll pass this around, one of the, the city of Dubuque has a program, says right on there that it's a downtown rehab program they have, that they have a loan fund that they run to address blight. I just, again, my original thing was to have a specific goal. Greg mentioned that if we wanted to include it, we could probably include it in the develop policies incentives to encourage infill opportunities and blight within the city limits. That seemed like a reasonable compromise to me, but I'm just mystified as to why we're so scared of that word.
What language would you recommend, Mark?
Well, I mean, I would just go along with Greg's compromise from the last meeting, that we just add the words "and blight" to the develop policies incentives to encourage infill opportunities and blight within the city limits.
Mayor, learner's dictionary, which I have on my phone, says blight is a disease that makes plants dry up and die. To me, that's fighting words, and I don't want fighting words to be part of our mission statement. Leave it off, let's do number two.
With respect, I understand the definition of blight from the dictionary, but I don't think that's what's implied in the federal guidelines. I guess I'm coming down on Mark's side on this one. You know, it's an opportunity to address issues that we all know exist, why not meet it head-on?
And I prefer Phil and Scott's version of deleting the word blight and going with number two.
Just to clarify, I wouldn't be completely upset if it was in there, I just think it's, we can be just as effective in addressing the issues without it, that's all.
Absolutely. We'll put it on for council action next week, we'll include the second vision statement, which seems to be the consent, and someone, we'll have to, someone, excuse me, someone will have to make a motion, one way or the other, to include it or not, next week, we'll include the backup documentation in there. I don't know, there's really, I mean, is there other information that we can provide to council? I mean, it's, it really just comes down to the language, from my perspective, whether or not you want to include it.
Other than having Osama's comment, which he hasn't made a comment on this, you basically have four people here that say we don't want the word blight in there.
That's why, I'll put it, I'll put it on the agenda without the language, that doesn't prevent, obviously a council member can make a motion to approve the goals and objectives with that language, however it would proceed.
Osama, your comment?
Yeah, I would make just a quick comment here. Actually, if we're going to live by our goals and objective that we put to ourselves, why doesn't that word falls under our goals and objectives? That's something we need to do. I don't know if it needs to be in the vision or the mission statement here, but if that's a goal for us to reach, why it's not under our goals that we need to tackle? So, that's just, and it's not mentioned in our goals and objectives that we need to do such things, so that's another way to look at it, so.
We'll include it next week for action, and we'll use vision statement number two.
For the record, I like vision statement number one, it's shorter.
Okay, well, you can always amend the motion next week.
Thanks, Tom.
I wasn't sure if there's any other, I guess, discussion, so we wanted to make sure we gave you that opportunity tonight on the goals, but I understand those were the only two items that came up.
Any other comments, council?
You know, some of these were in red, Greg, was that just from a previous draft, or were there specific, specific reasons?
I believe the red just highlighted the major changes or corrections that remain.
From the last meeting?
From the original, or from the goal-setting session?
And some of them are additions.
Right, additions, yep. Additional language that we discussed. I don't need anything else tonight.
Nothing else? Let's move along to item three, and Greg, I believe you're the presenter here as well.
Yes, sir. It's been an interesting exercise, it's really, it continues to be a work in progress. After meeting with councilmember Spread quite a few months back now, and having some discussion, one of the topics that came up were state and federal mandates that the city has. We really didn't have a list per se, we had a good idea in our, you know, of what those were, but we didn't have a list. So what we've done is really just start to gather a list of state and federal mandates. Those could be direct mandates, such as the CSO program, where we have a consent order from the EPA, and specific tasks to complete by a certain deadline, now 2028. They may be items of which we have no control over, like the pension system, municipal fire and police retirement system, or IPRs, we have no local control over that. The only local control is the number of officers that we have on our police or fire department, that's, but we have no local control over the pension system itself. So those are, that's kind of the threshold to get on the list, you know, there's either no local control, or it's a direct, you know, mandate down from state or federal government. I wasn't going to go through each of these word-for-word, I mean, if there's items that you'd like to get additional information on, our plan, or my plan, is to continue to update this list, flesh it out, put more numbers to the information that you have in front of you. But it's been a good exercise, I guess, from my perspective, to try and track the mandates that we deal with on a daily basis. Publication costs, it's something that comes up, you know, annually at, on, you know, at the legislative session, are cities required, or should they be continued to require to publish in our local newspapers? Should those be allowed to be done electronically via web? And that discussion comes up on an annual basis. ADA ramps, Public Works Department's been working on that for a number of years now, that's included in just about every project. We did some individual projects this past summer at different intersections. Those ADA ramp changes, I can't, I think there's been at least three different changes in the requirements in the past five or six years. The standard seems to be a moving target, they just changed on us again, and had to make some slight adjustments at some of our intersections, but there's, it's a mandate, it's a direct cost that, you know.
Does that mean we're going to have to redo some of the work we've already done?
No. We had to redo the, on the trail, there was a couple sections that had to be redone with those panels, those, you know, ADA panels, but it's something we tackle, bite off a little bit every year, and definitely address with each of our projects, the CSO project. You'll see new ADA, you know, the ramps and panels along Cedar Street. So it's something we address annually. It's a moving target, it seems, though, at the same time, with those standards changing. At one point, they could be concrete, and then they would change to the inserts that you're seeing at one time, they were yellow, they're red now, I mean, it's a moving target, but it's something we have to address on an annual basis and continue to do so. You know, certain, you know, inspections or certifications that we do, there's processes in here, there's an error on the collection and drainage, sewer separation, that's $50 million per our earlier discussions with the CSO project. Water pollution control plant, there's some issues or mandates that we see coming down the, in the future, dealing with water pollution control plant, and nutrient removal that John is keeping an eye on down at the water pollution control plant.
Greg, on that one, we don't know what our city's portion will be.
Not at this point, no. It's something that we're keeping an eye on.
It's going to be a big and scary number. It's like running a coal-fired power plant, you have no idea what it's going to be.
IPRs is a large one. Councilmember Natfig had some questions, and in front of you, you'll see a sheet that talks about our projected impacts, Nancy put that together, and it gives you an idea of, you know, IPRs, or excuse me, municipal fire and police are looking at just over a 30% increase projected in those rates for next year. Now, that translates, not including wage or step increases, to, you know, almost $230,000 that we're going to have to factor in during the budget process.
And that's just the increase, correct?
Yes, and from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, and we're not expecting that 30% to go down in the next four, five years. That's a tough one to absorb. How do cities, you know, do that on an annual basis? That's a, that's a large, it's not a chunk of change, it's significant expenditure that we have to budget for on an annual basis, and that affects other operations and priorities. So it, but it's a mandate, in that we have no local control over the pension system, how that operates, employee shares, employer share. So we've included it on the list. But, you know, as I said, it's been a good exercise, and we'll continue to keep it updated and put numbers where we can. If you haven't already, I encourage you to take a look at it, if you've got specific questions, and you'd like us to follow up on a particular item, I'll certainly do that and respond to everyone, but I appreciate councilmember Spread's question, and we'll continue to keep it updated, and.
My only comment about this, and I really appreciate the work, I understand that it's very difficult to quantify much of this, but it is a long and extensive list, and I look at this and wonder if there's a way to find offsets or take corrective measures, is there something we can do to control some of this? Having lived in other communities, and in particular out of state, I see the lead water service replacement issue, where every time we dig a hole in the street, we run into a lead pipe, the city replaces it at our expense. Why isn't that the property owner's expense? And what brought that to my mind is, you know, I sat in my office on Cedar Street during the sewer construction, I saw at least a half a dozen of these done right outside my window, you know. These are expensive issues, and that whole thing, it goes beyond that, and at what point is sidewalk replacement and repair a property owner's responsibility versus just the taxpayer? So I look at it with a critical eye and wonder if there are things we should be doing to address that.
And sidewalks is one of the specific items that we plan to review this next year, and, you know, determine if, bring back some recommendations on a potential sidewalk program, but, and there again, you'll have some decisions to make, you know, does the city do that? Do we budget for that on an annual basis? Do so much yearly? Do we continue to require the property owner to fix at their expense? Right now, we've got a joint program, Public Works will go in there and cut and tear out, remove the concrete, and then the owner's responsible for putting it back in at their expense. So you'll have some decisions to make on items like that, and on capital projects, you know, on capital projects like the CSO program, we're doing curb, not curb-to-curb, but sidewalk-to-sidewalk repair as we're going in there, and doing the work so we can get it done at once rather than have to come back in a year or two. Those are all good questions.
Greg, one that Randy and I talked about briefly yesterday was levy certification, $55,000. It seems like a big number to me to certify a levy, and I realize it's federal regulations, but I'd like to know more about what's involved in that. Most of my other questions Randy addressed.
You can certainly do that. You know, and that's, that's an important piece, especially with the levy work we just had done on Mad Creek, certainly come on up. And with the businesses involved, if that levy is not certified, Heinz and HNI could see increases of, in excess of a million dollars per year in their insurance rates. I mean.
The Mississippi River Levy was the big cost on this one, and as we talked about, Scott, that is, that cost is shared by the levy district, and the city pays the portion that's in the city limits, but that $5,000 was also spread out, I mean, it's still, and it's one-time cost, but it had to be certified, and the payers are the people that are protected by the levy inside the city and outside.
How often does it get recertified?
I'm not sure on that exactly. I think, Tom, it's, the frequency has to do with how often FEMA comes out with a new flood map, but I'm not positive. And regarding your comment on the lead water lines, it's, that's been an ongoing issue, and I think that you're absolutely right about that. And we have, at least to this point, when we do replace them, we only replace them to the property line, and from that point on, it is the property owner's responsibility, but.
Well, I know that if I were building a new home, and I wanted to tie into water service, I would have to pay somebody, you know, pay a plumber to install a water service, and I would probably pay a tap fee to hook on. It's my responsibility as a new homeowner, you know, is there any difference?
You're right, that's a good point.
It's been a good exercise, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, the one comment I would like to make for those folks that might be watching at home is, do go to the website, take a look at this, because it's an exhaustive list, and it was three or four months of work to put it together, and it's very helpful to understand the issues that we're dealing with when we budget.
Absolutely.
Scott, you had an additional comment?
No, that was it. I kind of echoed what Tom just said, that there's a lot here, and.
Anyone else, council? Okay, let's move along to item four, and I believe Nancy, you have the floor, a review of debt refunding.
The city's financial consultant, public financial management, PFM, Jenny Blankenship has been here, we sold the bonds, I guess that was just last, last June. They periodically check to see if there's any refunding opportunities on the city's existing debt, and basically, we did one year of refunding as part of our bond issuance last June. At this, at this time, our, the city's June 2006 bond issue is actually, has bonds that are callable as of June 1, 2013. Those bonds, the last three years of the issue, have interest rates of 3.9%, 3.95% and 4%. At the time we issued those bonds, that was a reasonable rate with the significant decrease in interest rates. PFM is estimating that those rates can be reduced to 0.5% through 0.73% for a significant decrease in interest cost to the city. That particular issue funded various general obligation debt, I can't recall specifically what, but streets, those kind of projects, as well as property acquisition for the landfill. So in refunding that debt, part of the savings would be in the landfill fund, which could benefit from interest rate savings, and the rest of it will be in the debt service fund, which is funded by the debt service property tax levy. So about $10,007 in the debt service, in the landfill fund over three years, and $40,200 in the debt service fund, again, over 40, over the next three years. In talking with Jenny about this refunding, we discussed whether we wanted to see if the local banks would be interested in participating in this transaction, rather than going through a whole public offering, opening up to everyone, and all three of the local banks indicated that they were interested in this transaction, and they concurred that Jenny's interest rates were not unreasonable. So with that in mind, we were able to save some costs on issuing refunding bonds, which benefits everybody, and then also lets the local banks have an opportunity for these bonds. The city council, we're, tonight, we just want to make council aware of what we're doing, there's going to be a number of items on the upcoming agenda in order to accomplish this. Discussion tonight, January 3rd, we need to set a public hearing, January 17th, we would hold the hearing, and then review the terms of offering that PFM will be preparing. On February 7th, we'll receive the bids and award the bids that evening, and then the final documents will be approved by city council on February 21st. So there's a number of actions, but it's all, we'll assist in actually next year's debt service tax levy rate, which we originally projected may go up 10 cents per thousand for debt service. And we don't have the valuations yet, but based on a 2% increase in valuations, we now don't think we'll have to increase the debt service tax levy rate any for next fiscal year. So this would be a good transaction, and it'll take a number of councils' action through the next couple months, but it will save a total of around $50,000 over three years.
But there's a $15,500 cost to do it, right? The net benefit is $35,000?
No, the $50,000 is net of the issuance costs.
Is it?
That significant, from 4% down to 0.5 and 0.7% is very dramatic for interest rates.
Council, questions for Nancy?
It appears to me like it's just another example of you staying on top of these kind of things, and our advisors, and taking advantage of a good opportunity to save the citizens some money, so I think it's commendable that.
Yeah, and definitely at PFM, they're up to date on markets and that type of thing, so they're very good at bringing this to our attention.
Anyone else, council? Nancy, I believe you still have the floor on the review of proposed financial software.
A year ago, we discussed during budget the need for new financial software for the city, and council, I believe, was supportive, we included $140,000 in the current fiscal year budget for the software. There's a small committee of staff that has been looking at various software, and that was John Cruzenstein, our IT manager, who's here, Stephanie Romanoli, HR manager, Leanna McCullough, our accounting supervisor, and myself. I had been in touch with, or I've talked to a lot of software vendors, we chose to look in kind of more detail with four different software people that we were aware of, that are, have software in the region. The, the goals that we were looking at, and our current software, we've had it for almost 20 years, it's not easily accessible to departments, we wanted something. that departments could access, run their own reports, check on their budgets without having to request reports from the city, from the city finance department. We wanted to have some workflow things, so some things can be done electronically, purchase orders, so a department can prepare a requisition, have it approved electronically by their department head, have it forwarded to finance, have it approved by finance electronically, and sent to vendors also electronically. We also wanted to have a similar workflow for entering employee payroll time, their hours worked and their leave used. We wanted to have the ability to transfer financial data from the system directly into Excel. And under the current system, you can do it, but it's cumbersome to do it. And then we were also looking for just any other features which were available that we might not have been aware of. And in looking at the software, the, the system that appeared to meet our requirements and then actually, we think has some value added, is Springbrook software. There, we did look at the four vendors. We had demos from three of the four. The one we didn't choose to have the demo from, the original cost was 260,000, and we thought that was a little above our $140,000 budget. They later came down to 200,000, but that was still quite a bit higher, so we chose not to have a demo from them. I'm sure they could have done what we needed. The Springbrook software, though, it does appear to meet all our requirements, and then add some value as well. They are actually, Springbrook is a nationwide company. They have software throughout the country. They're based in Portland, but they do have a regional office in St. Cloud, Minnesota, and that's the same regional office that our current vendor has. ACS also has a regional office in St. Cloud. And Springbrook has some of the people we formerly worked with at ACS now work for Springbrook, so they're familiar with the ACS software, their experience with conversion of data from the ACS into their software. They've been in business for about 30 years and have 450 local city customers. They, one of the things that really, in our minds, distinguish them from the other software vendors is that they have a business process study before you even start to implement their software. They come in and we review what we're currently doing for reports and processes, make recommendations of how we can streamline those before we even try to set up a new system. And this is something that goes pretty much hand in hand with the lean process review. You know, we would be looking at all our processes for efficiencies in this, and it would benefit our office as well as other departments of the city. Some of the specific things, and this was attached to the, to my memo, and it does meet our original goals, the electronic workflow things for payroll and purchase orders, and powers, and users to run their own reports. There's a document attachment feature, so we can, in the ledger, upload, we probably won't put in all the individual smaller items, but significant payments, we can attach documents. So if you look at that, you can actually click on it and drill down and see the invoice that backs up that expenditure. Some of the detailed things we do on payroll is Federal Labor Standards Act, FLSA overtime. Now we're doing that using Excel and entering it manually in our payroll system, and the system will compute that directly. And some of it has to do with, actually, the fire department, and they have a 28-day look-back period, and this Springbrook does have capabilities and to document how that overtime under FLSA was calculated. There will also be savings and ongoing hardware replacements compared to what we have with ACS, the AS400. Usually, I think, four or five years, we need a new AS400. The last time it was about 23,000. And so we wouldn't, we would no longer have that with this proposed system. They did, they have a lot of security features in this program, both by users and by processes. So if we want departments to have read-only access, that's what they have. If we have a, if we want certain people in departments to be able to enter purchase orders, we can limit that to certain people, as well as having certain people approve that. Any changes, and this was one of the audit comments, there would be a trail for any kind of entries made to, if there was a write-off of a receivable, there would be a trail on who did it and when it was done. And that's something we do not have with our current software. They did, their pricing is within the budget. The original price was slightly over 140,000 and through negotiations. And they also just recently reduced it a little more if the city would enter into contract before December 31st this year. That would be 132,320, and that's all-inclusive. That's the software, the training, and the conversion. There would be some hardware we would need to get, and John has detailed that out, about 10,000, slightly over 10,000. We would look at that and refine those numbers, and that would bring us just slightly over the 140,000 budget, but right at 142. But again, that's, that's pretty close, and we think the, the features fully meet our requirements. And we are actually proposing that council consider, if you have questions tonight, I'd be happy to answer, but if council's in concurrence, we would like council to consider entering into a contract with Springbrook at the meeting next week. The, the implementation, it would be a long process. They do, and this is why I held the memo before I put it out in their regular agenda, they do have a lot of cities looking at software right now. Signing a contract now, we would start the business process review in June and work into the core parts of the software, the general ledger, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, and have that, with the goal of having that done by December 31st. And then after that was fully installed and comfortable, then we would add the workflows from the departments. So that would be done shortly after the first of the next calendar year. But this business process does take some time, and I think it's well worth setting it up the, the way that will best serve our needs.
Nancy, how many people use that software within city staff?
Right now, it's basically, most of my staff and HR are the only ones that have direct access, so I think that's, and there's actually three registers hooked directly into our current software. So I think, including the registers, there's probably 10.
But isn't the concept that the department managers would be able to see performance of their areas basically on demand?
Yes.
So...
And John and I...
Managers at least have view-only access to it.
John and I did a rough count this, just this afternoon, and we're like, 50 to 55 people would have access to it. The office coordinators would be able to, as well as department heads, the division heads that are responsible for budgets. So like, the supervisors in the park department would all have access. They often come in and ask for special reports.
Anyone that initiates a purchase order would...
Yes.
That would extend beyond...
Right, yeah. So we're thinking that that 50 to 55 covers it. With this software license, we can have what they call 10, I'm not sure what their term is, primary users, and then up to 100 casual users. And those would be the ones that are entering purchase orders, that type of thing.
Is the data stored locally here in this building, or would it be somewhere else?
It would be here, and this is a good John question.
I suppose all the councils probably hanging their heads right now that Bob asked, and the council member, Bynum, asked another question that I had to approach the podium for. Anyway, in answer to your question, yes, the data would be stored here on a local database server. We did look at potentially having this as a cloud-based system. However, there, of course, with the advantages and disadvantages, but truthfully, financially, it became prohibited to have this system be cloud-based. So yes, the data would be housed in this building.
John, are you using 2008 or 2012?
This particular system would still be 2008.
So it'll be 2008?
Yes.
So is there any, if, if all of the potential users were on at the same time, is that going to slow down Nancy's staff from working?
We would probably have a, most of the processing, of course, happens on the server on this particular instance, and we would make sure that the server would be robust enough to, to be able to handle that. I would not look for, for having 55 users concurrently.
Well, probably not.
But, you know, most of these are going to be a pretty casual user, but, you know, if a department head would run some reports, of course, obviously, that takes some additional processing power. However, I would not think that that would, that's, that would be an issue with, with just the numbers that we're talking about and the, and the number of concurrent users we would probably have.
Is it potentially, is it possible to set priorities on who, who has priority use?
I'm sure that it would be, yes.
Within the system?
Yes.
Is this going to integrate with Office? Can you export to Excel, or does it have its own version of the spreadsheet?
No, it, it will export directly to Excel. As a matter of fact, that's one of the things that was very nice about the system as a, as opposed to our existing system. There was, we are able to export files to Excel. However, it's somewhat cumbersome in the tasks that are involved with this. It's, it's, it's as simple as printing a report, and you could, you can say, I wanted it in Excel.
Have you looked into any deconversion expense from ACS?
We had a meeting about that today, and I also were, we are going to be, be having more conversation with that about, about the next week. At this point, I don't think it will be a large, large dollar figure, and I think one of the advantages of this is they, that Springbrook has, has done several different conversions from the ACS on the iSeries platform, which is what we're on. And, and so they've got a, they've got a lot of experience. They also have on, on their staff, a couple of people that were formerly with ACS. Their, their regional offices happen to be in the same community. And so I think there's some advantages there as well. So I do not expect it to be significant, with the exception of probably, it'll probably be a time, it won't be insignificant time-wise.
This team that, that looked into this must be comfortable with the window-based platform going forward as far as...
Well, I think that when you look at it, the, if you look at the iSeries, the green screen that we've kind of been using, it's been, it's, it's a good system for data entry. It really is. However, in terms of integration with the rest of the, of the city system, integration with emailing reports, just getting a type of a workflow, it's extremely difficult to do with our, with our existing system. So this system, it integrates quite well with, with what we have in place. I will probably be trying to get, get, encourage everybody to use keyboard shortcuts when they can, so they don't have to keep moving hands. But, you know, I, I think that the staff will be very comfortable, and, and especially from a new user, user perspective, or a department head that's more casual, or, or an office coordinator that's, that's in an outlying department, will probably be much more comfortable in using a graphical-based system as opposed to a text, a text system.
Well, moving away from the AS400 makes a lot of sense, but I just didn't know what else is out there nowadays as far as...
When, when you look at the, at the database, I, I feel very comfortable with the system we're proposing, yes.
Counsel, anyone have questions, additional questions for John or Nancy? Great, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up to the plate, Chief Evers.
He did that deliberately. Got one minute per slide, right?
Gotcha.
Good.
Okay, can you hear me okay? What we want to do is give an overview of what we've done the last year and a half in regards to the restructuring and reorganization in the fire department. And what we're going to talk about is, this reorganization is with existing personnel, the existing staff that we have at the department, so it's not talking about adding more people. Moving one current assistant chief, what we call a shift commander that works a 24-hour shift, who's in charge of a shift, moving them over to a day position, an administrative position, Monday through Friday, and then renaming the current shift commanders, who we call assistant chiefs, renaming them to battalion chiefs. And that's, that's similar in most departments that you'll see the terminology. Some people will say, well, you know, why do you have so many assistant chiefs? And technically, they're not assistant chiefs, they're shift commanders, they run a shift, and so it's just terminology, and so we kind of want to clean that up. The goal is to come back next week, if it's, if that's what council would like us to do, and have this on a meeting, meeting agenda. But what we, what we would really like to do is, is make this permanent. We initially conducted an internal organizational review of the fire department. We tried to focus on processes and procedures and programs, how we can be more efficient. We allocated existing staff into a model to best meet the needs of our organization, and again, the external customers that we serve, which is the citizens. We tried to balance out the workloads, and restructuring creates efficiencies and promotes effective management by moving people around and putting them in charge of different programs and responsibilities. So supports operations and service delivery, and overall improves customer service. Here's the current authorized org chart that we have in the fire department, and what I have there, that blue line, it's kind of hard to see, but the blue line basically shows you the difference between who works a 40-hour work week and who, who works a 56-hour work week, which is the 24-hour shift. So again, if you look at the fire chief, there's no uniformed staff that's authorized working Monday through Friday. I have a part-time secretary, and we also have a billing manager. Otherwise, everyone else is all shift personnel. So if you ever come over to the fire station during the daytime, if they're out on inspections or doing pub ed or out on emergency calls, normally what you'll find is you'll see myself in there, you'll see our secretary, and you'll see the billing manager, and you won't find anybody else in uniform. What we're looking at for the reorganization request, like I stated earlier, is, is moving, moving one of the current assistant chiefs two days as an administrative 40-hour position, which puts them above that 40-hour work week line, and then renaming what are currently assistant chiefs or in charge of a shift, renaming them to battalion chiefs. When we look at how we compare to other similar communities our size, if you look at, you know, like Burlington, Clinton, Mason City, these are all communities that we're compared to. They all run ambulance services, we're pretty similar, and this shows you the uniformed personnel... shows you the uniformed personnel differences between the cities. For admin staff, now, I'm not talking about secretaries, I'm talking about firefighters, uniformed people that can go fight fires and do other things. If you look at the majority of the fire departments, some people always joke or kid is that, you know, the Muscatine Fire Chief is a one-man show because he has no other assistants or no other people helping him Monday through Friday in regards to programs and responsibilities. And if you look at Burlington or Clinton or Mason City, they have between two to three additional day staff people, administrative, helping them run the organization, run programs, things of that nature. And if you look at even the police department, you know, Brett has three people working days assisting him with the operations of the police department. And again, if you look at Muscatine, I don't have anyone working the forty-hour days assisting. Here's an overview of department statistics, again, going back to the earlier days and look at where we are now. We have the same number of uniformed people that we did back in the seventies. When I started in the late eighties, we had four people, well, working a forty-hour work week, we had the assistant, we had the fire chief, we had the fire marshal, we had the fire inspector, and we had a training officer, and then we had three ten-man shifts, and that was kind of the structure. And back then, we made three and a half calls a day. We didn't have the ambulance service, we didn't have protection for hazmat services for five counties. So, again, things are different today than what they were years ago. Kind of going over the eighteen-month trial that we've been doing with this, moving this person over into this day position, started back in two thousand and eleven, again, moved a fifty-six-hour employee to a forty-hour position. We filled the void for the positions that were eliminated through attrition over the years, those positions that I mentioned earlier, the fire marshal and inspector and training officer. And in essence, what we're doing is we're having one person fill those positions years ago that it took three people to do, and we're doing it with one now. What really helps is the consistency and continuity with shift programs and responsibilities and a conduit between the chief and the shift staff personnel, not just the management staff, but the line workers. Manage processes that generate revenue. I think this is a key component when you look at what we do with the ambulance revenue of about one point two million dollars, the permit required confined space, the hazmat contracts that we provide for five counties, the new fee structure for the permits, things of those nature. This is all, has the responsibility of this forty-hour position in regards to revenue that's coming in to the department. And then improve customer service to citizens. And giving an example is that a lot of the responsibilities we have to push back down to the, what we call the shift commanders, responsibilities, one in charge of inspections, another one is pub ed, and another one is maintenance. So, as an example, if someone has a code question or in regards to an inspection that was performed, depending on their cycle of their days on and their days off, a citizen may have to wait four to six days to get an answer or to speak to the individual. And so, by having this day position over, you know, being in charge of this is that we can give better customer service to the people, whether they call on the telephone, whether they email, or whether they walk in in person. And then, again, I think the benefit is that the day position still responds to emergencies. So, when the alarm goes off, if it's significant in nature, again, Mike and I both respond and get more additional personnel on scene, and so, that's a benefit also. The impact of the reorganization, at least in my opinion, this has been very productive and effective and efficient in the overall fire department operations. I think it's, has a positive impact on the shift in the department morale, creates a second in charge of the department, and then the big thing is managing the fire marshal duties, a pretty important thing that we have to do here, everything that would fall under the fire marshal responsibilities. Same thing with the training program, overseeing the training program. A big thing that they have to do is the required training, lining up the instructors and doing it within our budget to make sure that everyone gets their appropriate training that's required, acts as a liaison with other city and county departments, acts as a liaison with Muscomm and IT and billing department in regards to all of our CAD and then all of our reporting software in regards to our EMS reporting and our fire reporting. And I think here's the, probably the key point here, and normally what you normally ask is, you know, what's this going to cost? And I think, you know, number one, we've done this restructuring for a year and a half, we've talked about it at budget sessions, the last two budget sessions. And if you look at the cost for the fiscal year twelve thirteen, it's cost neutral with anticipated personnel changes that we have in the fire department. And then, when you look at the following fiscal year thirteen fourteen, we have an approximately nine thousand dollar cost with anticipated personnel changes. So, I guess what I would like to do is, you know, give you the opportunity to ask any question. Again, it would be my goal to come back to city council next week with this unless you'd like to do something differently.
Chief, I've got one question. I've got the thirty-seven, the number thirty-seven, does that include the recently?
Yes, yep, that's thirty-seven uniformed personnel. We had thirty-six before, and you increased our staffing by one as of July first, so we're at thirty-seven.
And now, we're going to have one shift short again.
We will have, we will have one shift short again, but with our internal review of being effective in regards to managing the entire fire department operationally for overseeing programs and responsibilities and revenue, we feel that this is appropriate to do this, and it also gives us the opportunity of where, like currently, Mike and I still both respond to emergencies. So, if you looked at the numbers earlier where you saw that we were at thirty-seven and the majority of the communities our size that are doing the same stuff that we're doing are at forty-four and forty-five, again, my goal would be eventually for you to consider the idea of increasing staffing over the years when revenue would be able to support those increases.
So, those other communities have an ISO rating of three?
A few of them do, yes. Yeah, majority of them are four, but it is, I mean.
Chief, the nine thousand dollars, is that salaries and wages or does it include benefits?
That's wages and benefits.
And benefits?
Yes.
Everybody does it a little bit differently. Mason City's got forty-four officers or uniformed personnel, they have an overtime budget of, I think, only around fifty thousand dollars, but with those additional officers, they're spending another half a million dollars at least in cost. Burlington just reduced theirs, I think their number is now down to forty-four or forty-three uniformed personnel, but they have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar overtime budget, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar overtime budget, and that's been pretty static for the last several years. I think the department's done a pretty good job with managing calls where you're at ninety-two percent, was it, or just shy of ninety-two percent?
Ninety-one point seven.
Of calls are EMS-related, so, I mean, it's not really a fire service any longer, it's an EMS service, ninety-two percent of your business is EMS-related. They've done a good job managing the overtime and working with the staff that they have in place right now. I think Burlington's probably a pretty good comparison, just down the street from us, and at this point in time, they've got, I think it's forty-three or forty-four uniformed personnel, but they're spending a quarter of a million dollars in overtime, an additional hundred thousand dollars over what our fire department's spending to get the same job done. And I think your calls are pretty comparable, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, I have that here.
But that was one of the reasons why we filled this other position was to reduce our overtime, is it?
And that's been one of my.
Kind of, but has it been working? Is our overtime cost over the last six months been down?
Our overtime cost has been pretty stagnant, about the same. Years ago, we were budgeted at a hundred and ten, and we went over that every year. We increased it to a hundred and fifty, and it's been pretty consistent. If you look at the overtime, with only one shift being short, that's like a third of it, it's been offset here over the last eighteen months because, like I said, like during the day, with Mike working during the day, he backfills and is available, and so am I. If you take the whole overtime budget and divide it between the people that are authorized to get overtime, it's about five thousand, or it's about four thousand dollars per individual. I think we've saturated our overtime availability, something that we've discussed with Greg, is I think you could increase our overtime budget to two hundred thousand dollars, but basically what we're doing is we're relying on people to come in to perform the job functions on their day off, and they're already working a lot of overtime, and they've kind of saturated that, and so, it doesn't matter how many times we page out or overtime becomes available, eventually, they need a day off. And so, I think we're, with the people that we have, and even including our part-timers, we're not going to be able to get any more overtime usage out of the folks that we already have, so.
I think the other thing we've talked about is when will new staffing be justified? With the addition of Ripley's, we're talking four, five, six additional fire calls per year, it wasn't going to be enough to push us over the top, I guess, for that next piece, although the chief certainly would like to even up the shifts sooner rather than later, but substantial, but substantial personnel increases will come most likely, whether it be police or fire, as that area, and we're going to be talking about it in January, too, but that area between Ripley's and Highway thirty-eight, as that area really starts to develop, that's when we'll be looking at the potential to add additional staff.
But if additional staff can reduce the overtime significantly, then it can be justified, but if.
Offset some of it, yeah.
Yeah, offset, I mean, but if it's not going to do that.
Yeah, it's not just overtime, and we'd want to look at, too, it would be, you know, injuries with firefighter personnel, longer hours, injuries, I mean, we've done things to help offset that, like the bariatric cot, you know, so you get, you don't get those shoulder injuries or those back injuries, but the more they work there, the greater the opportunity for injury. So, you know, injuries and overtime are really the, I don't know, from my perspective, the two key components that we've been looking at.
Chief, am I correct in thinking that your department does more training than some of the other cities our size, too, you know?
Well, I mean, the required.
Side of the department?
The required training is the same for everybody. I think what, I would have to say that we're probably lacking in either some of the training or quality of training, just for the fact is that we don't have a designated training officer that focuses, again, most departments have a training officer, and that's all they do is manage the whole training department, or the whole training program for the department, Monday through Friday, eight to five. And what I'm suggesting here is, is that I'm asking for, to move one of our staff to a day position that's basically going to do three jobs, and then some of the other stuff that pops up through the normal cycle in the administrative function. So, I would have to say right now, we're probably lacking a little bit behind in regards to our training.
What I was thinking, I was remembering, is we were training people from other towns and cities on some things, we brought them in for training sessions?
We always invite other people in when we do training sessions, and a lot of what we do here in the Muscatine County is to help the smaller volunteer departments around us, so anytime we have a live fire burn, we bring them in, anytime we have outside instructors come in or specialty classes, we always invite outside folks in. I would say what we're probably really known for is our outstanding ambulance service, and we have people from all over Iowa and even outside of Iowa that come to Muscatine and want to see how they can run a successful ambulance service or how they can implement an ambulance service in their community. So, you know, I would have to give kudos to our staff for the people that, you know, again, do the ninety-one point seven percent of our call volume, is that they do it real well, and I think that's known in the Midwest, and people are coming and asking us questions.
That's probably what I was remembering.
Well, and the other, the other point with the fires or the ambulance you need to point out, and is mentioned to me, is the amount of money, the percentage that gets collected is high, or higher than the average, considerably higher. So, you're not only doing a lot of ambulance calls, but you're actually getting money for them, which some services aren't collecting.
That's true. I think we have a good billing company, and we have a lot of great processes, checks and balances in-house that we do, we do a good job on collections, the income offset program helps also, our billing manager assist, and I was just looking at the ambulance revenues today, and I was being somewhat conservative in our numbers because of last year with the winter months having a slow month, we can't, we can't make people call nine-one-one and utilize our services, and so, sometimes it's cyclical, but even being conservative with our numbers, we're looking at a very good fiscal year with the ambulance service, and so, we'll be talking about that a little bit more when we go through budget sessions.
Two things that concerned me with the trial were, I didn't want to see a loss in a level of service or an increase in overtime, didn't see either one of those, especially with the assistant being able to respond during the forty hours. Neither one of those concerns developed, and I think the chief's, you know, in the information provided indicated the additional work that's gotten done by having the forty-hour position. I've seen a lot of benefits, I haven't seen the negatives that I was expecting to see, and they haven't, they haven't shown up.
The key point is, do we want to initiate this, basically for January one, or do we want to go through our budget session and approve to approve this?
Greg, as seeing these people and do their work on a daily basis, how dedicated they are, how quickly that they get from point A to the scene of a, an accident, as a citizen of Muscatine, being there quickly and being there thoroughly trained and knowing the knowledge means a heck of a lot to me as a citizen. I've used their services, I'm a witness to it, I've gone through their Citizen Fire Academy and watched them, and actually talked to the people, talked to the community as well, they're very well-respected, very well-trained, and as I said before, these guys are heroes here in Muscatine. The time that it takes them to get to point E from the station two, for example, out to a house, means a lot to the community. We don't want to have the community say to us, "Oh, I guess we don't have enough firemen because it took them twenty minutes to get to me," or "We had to wait for someone from Fruitland to come, come help us with the fire." That simply doesn't happen here in Muscatine. Truly, that we have a great squad, and I want to say on behalf of the city, thanks for your great job.
Thank you.
As to councilmember Fitzgerald's, I guess, question, I guess, the chief was looking to institute this program sooner rather than later, given that there's no impact this fiscal year and there's a minimal impact next fiscal year. We have not completed our review, we'll continue to do that during the budget process to determine whether or not we recommend an additional firefighter at this time, we have not completed that. That would be something council would have the opportunity to review at budget if it was brought forward at that time, but given the impact, the chief was hoping to start sooner rather than later, or the lack of impact, I guess. Excuse me.
Council, any more questions for the chief? Very good, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments before we entertain a motion?
Thank you, mayor. I just invite everybody stay up a little late tonight, especially if you've got young kids, students at home, Geminid meter shower tonight, it's supposed to be a lot of activity, we actually have a comet passing by, it's going to add a little dust to the show, should be very visible, but again, if you have students at home, it's fun to watch. Thank you, mayor.
Phil, you've got a perfect platform for that kind of stare-gazing.
Yeah, right. I just want to make comment that of the, all the presentations this evening were, seemed to be straight to the point, and I appreciate that, especially considering it's only five after eight, and we had five, six items on the, or five items on the agenda, so staff did a very, very good job. Thank you.
Nothing tonight, thank you, mayor.
Some?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nothing tonight, Chair? Tonight?
Dennis?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Tom?
You all right?
Bring?
January 18th is the trivia night. If councilmembers are interested in putting together a team, we'd certainly welcome council to attend our staff trivia night as well. Mayor attended last year, along with his wife, appreciated that. So if you're interested, just let Fran know, certainly welcome you at that event, that's January 18th at 6:30, so.
Pretty good. I have no comments, anything else? Counsel? Is there a motion to adjourn? Adjourn.